Hey, Roger. What place that we got the press from?
Mayor, you got my.
I got paid for this there. Crash. I was tight with her. I'm waiting for change. Sounds just even better. You didn't owe me anything because it was my son's. He didn't give you a cent. That time, right?
We did on the other day thinking because he was my son's.
Okay, now.
How many orders? We're being sued by the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as is God.
Councilman Lowry. Bow your heads, please. Dear gracious heavenly father, Lord, we come here this evening, Lord, and lift up your name and thank you for all of the blessings that you have given to us. We ask you, Lord, that you be with us this evening as we go about the business of the city. Lord, for those who are absent this evening, we pray, Lord, that you would watch over them and keep them safe, Lord. For all that you do for us, we ask in your name, amen.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Benel.
Present.
Gons.
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt.
Here.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowery.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trigg.
Here.
Witcher.
Everybody have concerns and thoughts about Councilman Witcher. My understanding is he has pneumonia and he's really under the weather, so wouldn't hurt to give him a little prayer out there to him for him. You have the minutes of the last council meeting, September 27, 2021, in your packet. If there's not any deletions, corrections, or amendments to it, I would accept a motion to accept those minutes as published.
Motion by Benel.
Benel makes a motion to approve the minutes and Kirkpatrick makes the second. All those in favor, sitting five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, lock sign. The minutes are passed. Once in a lifetime, we have no unfinished business. We have only new business tonight. The first item is ordinance one, first reading of ordinance 2021, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-2989, the City of Glasgow's annual budget for fiscal year seven, 121 through 63022.
City of Glasgow ordinance number 2021-blank and ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-2989, the City of Glasgow annual budget for the fiscal year seven, 121 through 63022, appropriating $105,872 from the unappropriated general fund balance for the purpose of wage increases to the 911 call center, center full-time employees, and to receive $70,000 from the City of Cave City and Barron County Fiscal Court. Be hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that the City of Glasgow annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, is hereby amended as follows. Section one, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund $105,872 to the 911 communication department. The following amount shall be distributed to the following 911 communications department expense accounts for a $2 per hour wage increase for full-time employees. $8,320 to account 010-2290-8105, communications department salaried employees. $69,376 to account 010-2290-8110, communications department hourly employees. $960 to account number 010-2290-8112, communications department overtime employees. $21,198 to account number 010-2290-8120, communications department pension. $4,877 to account 010-2290-8130, communications department FICA expense. $1,141 to account number 010-2290-8131, communications department Medicare expense. Section two, there is hereby received from the City of Cave City, the sum of $20,000 to the communications department inter-local agreement account number 010-2290-6326. Section three, there is hereby received from the Barron County Fiscal Court, the sum of $50,000 to the communications department inter-local agreement account number 010-2290-6326. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading, October 11, 2021.
Having heard the reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Mayor, I'm trying, I make a motion to postpone indefinitely this measure.
Okay, can I explain something? We're not voting on giving them a raise, we're voting to accept that money. The raise has been given. But if you don't want to take their money, that's entirely up to y'all. Okay?
Mayor, I guess, I guess my question was, I mean, I think once before when we were arguing about the ambulance service, we were looking at the percentage of, say, calls in the city, you know, how much we should put into the thing. So considering what you just said about they already had a pay raise.
They're getting a pay raise, yes.
Or they're getting, getting their pay raises, I'm assuming like every other city employer, then.
No.
Should this be?
It's not like every other city employee. It's what they've been docked over the last eight years.
All right.
We're putting them right back where they were seven and a half years ago.
All right, so instead of coming to this, like an ordinance first, shouldn't this go before the finance committee? Is, wouldn't that be the proper way for this to be planned out? Is, is that the, the Cave City and Barron County said they want to give us some money? The finance committee meets and then they decide if it meets the rules or is the right way to go about doing this? And then what they send forth to us is a recommendation from the finance committee that we take the money. Is that, am I missing something or?
There must be because I've never had, I've never sat on this, on this council or anyone else when, when another entity was going to pay their, part of their share and we refused to take their money. But, I mean, it's between, it's between daily, daily operations, which is the mayor's responsibility to make sure it's that. We've been working on this for two years to try to get them back where they were, but we couldn't because they're spending a lot of their time for the county, for Cave City, and yet they weren't paying anything. So, I mean.
Mayor, in this agreement, Cave City, every year will give the city $20,000 and the county has agreed, the fiscal court has agreed, every year to give $50,000?
They've agreed to that and they're supposed to be signing inter-local agreement that states that. It'll be, it'll be not for other raises, but just to cover this one from this point forward. That's correct.
Every year they have, they, you expect them to agree.
They've accepted to do that and they're supposed to have the paperwork for the inter-local agreement. Both parties have said that they would sign it before the end of March.
Yeah, I would be like you, Joe. I'd rather it come from the finance committee, back to us with more of the questions that I'm sure we all have, would be my recommendation.
Well, the purpose of doing the motion to postpone indefinitely is for this, this kills the main motion without a direct vote on the main motion, and the main motion may be renewed at a different meeting. I'm in agreement with Councilman Trigg and Councilman Gons that we need to look at this in the finance committee first and that any measure when it comes to payroll increases be administered fairly across all the employees of the City of Glasgow. So I would move, I mean, that's why I asked for this motion to postpone indefinitely.
That's fair if you want to do that, but this department is not unlike the rest of the departments. You don't have any other department that serves the county and Cave City, and that's the reason that this one is different, and that's the reason we've asked for, for them to help, and they agreed in their court meeting that they should be helping.
It's not that I don't think the staff of the 911 call center are due an increase, and, and I believe in what they're doing and in the supervisors work with them. However, the way that this has come about, I think it needs to go through proper channels.
I don't know what to tell you about proper channels because I know that once they get the raises, then if we got the money coming back in, if we don't, we're going to have to come back in here and adjust the budget to pay for it ourselves instead of taking the money from them.
Well, if you're, if you're going to make a decision to give them the raise yourself, then what, what can't we wait to receive the money at the next meeting or something?
It's already been received. We just got to put it in the right departments.
Is it, is it my understanding that they've already had the raise?
No, no. They, we, we said when we got the money, we had to put it in the proper departments and then we would get that, and we hoped to do it by the first of September, but the money didn't come in until last, last part of last month. And now we're, we're trying to put it in the right department so that it can be administered.
So if we don't accept the county's money, the city has to pay for it, correct? For their.
Probably.
That's, that's what I'm gathering.
If, if I could bring up a point of order, I don't think there's ever been a motion to accept this ordinance and/or a second. And if there's not been a motion to accept the ordinance and a second, then I don't think you can make your motion to delay. I think you've got to have this officially on the, on the table and be discussing it officially and then make your motion to delay. And I don't think you can have discussion on this ordinance until somebody makes a motion. So if somebody, if nobody makes a motion, it's going to fail from nobody making a motion. If nobody makes a second, it will fail.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, now, this motion to accept this ordinance is official and, and Mr. Benel, I think, can make his motion to delay if he prefers at this point because it's open for discussion now and it's legitimately an item for everybody to, to talk about. So I'll shut up and let you proceed. Thank you. My motion is to postpone indefinitely the ordinance as before us. I'll second that.
And, and we got members of the finance committee, so what, what, what's your plan? If we go to the finance committee with this, what would the finance committee be saying or doing?
What we would do, if the raise has already been given, is that we would say, yes, we need the money from the county and the City of Cave City. I don't know what else we could say about it other than we appreciate them helping with the expense because it is a shared expense that the department has been thwarted change for a long time. I don't think it's, it's money that we need to spend.
So realistically, the finance committee would either say, yes, we're going to accept the money, or no, we're going to not accept the money, here's where it's going to go, and then they would come back to the city council and say, we've accepted the money, this is where it's been allocated, just doing a amendment to the budget.
That would be, yeah, that would be the question before us is, do we want to accept their money and is this the right allocation for it?
And also, Wendell, would you assume we would need to discuss where the extra $35,000, how that was, come up with?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, if it's spent, it can only come from one place, you know.
Their money is earmarked, matter of fact, one of the checks is written to 911, so it's earmarked to go down there. We can't reroute it somewhere else. It's for that particular reason. But, that being said.
Joe, to answer your question, I would want a copy of the inter-local agreement or we got a guarantee for, as the mayor said, for 10 years or five years, whatever the agreement's going to be, that we're going to receive that money every year because if we do give a raise, then that's going to come back next year, pension, raise, everything. It's not just $2 an hour, it's probably $2.50, $2.60 an hour. And then I think that the finance committee should look at every city department. I understand the money's coming for 911, but if they just got a raise in July, did that money just come from Cave City or Barron County or did some of that money come out of the cities?
The July raise was the city.
The city, okay. This? Just this part. It's just on the.
Well, with due diligence, we should, anybody's going to give us money, like the mayor said, we need to take it. That's how we allocate it. And every day, I think, we just.
We reverse money in and out all the time. We're doing it right now. So if we paid it and they're paying us, you could always take their money and reimburse our money back. You know what I'm saying? I mean, you can't just go one way, you've got to work both ways.
Well, we, we need to spend it, we need to spend it in the way they intended.
Absolutely.
When they sent it to us.
If you guys would be willing to make that interpretation, that's all I'm saying.
If we could do that Tuesday of next week.
Yeah.
And then come back the next, the next week, which.
Would you be willing to modify your amendment to say that this is going to go before the finance? No, you're not.
No, I mean, my motion is that we postpone it indefinitely and, and then hopefully this legislative body will take it up, but I'm not wanting the motion to postpone it indefinitely. Without, without being rude and interrupting you, we need to probably have a second to that motion because we've been dis. Councilman Gons seconded. Okay, and then, and I think we need to vote on that motion before we proceed to discuss the other motion on ordinance.
You're, you're voting on whether to postpone it indefinitely?
It's, Danny, is that the right postpone, you know what I'm saying? Sometimes we put stuff on hold and nothing ever happens to it. Is there, is this the right way to do that so that we can get further action from the finance committee?
Well.
If you have a first and a second, if that's what y'all agreed to, to have made the first and the second, we can do a roll call vote and see if y'all want to, if everybody wants to go that way.
Let's, let's see if we can. And, and not to answer for the city attorney, but on page 333 of the KLC book relating to motions, the motion to postpone indefinitely, it kills the main motion without a direct vote on the main motion, is what we've done. The main motion may be renewed at a different meeting. So, Councilman Trigg, that should tell you what we're doing. We're not acting tonight. We're postponing this. There's no timeline put on it, no other conditions put on it.
It says that maybe brought up again.
I just believe if they're giving us money, that we should go ahead and take the money. I just, I don't see a reason to delay it.
Councilman Gons asked the question about the inter-local agreement. Have we seen the inter-local agreement? Does, and, and Councilman Lowery asked about, is there a timeline in that inter-local agreement? That's information I don't have, and why would we act on this tonight when we don't have all the information as the legislative body? I'm asking us to postpone this action tonight and hopefully it will be taken up by the finance committee meeting, and your finance committee individuals can then determine how to bring it forward to the legislative body.
He, I believe he said that he would get a copy of the inter-local agreement for Tuesday finance meeting, so I don't know why.
When you say postpone and you say indefinitely, that doesn't put it back.
I don't know, I don't understand why we would be postponing indefinitely instead of bringing it up at the next time.
I, I think there he's saying that. Time limit. Yeah, he's saying that it can be brought up at the finance committee meeting and then put back on next, next time's agenda.
My understanding is you'll have the, you'll have interlo, it's been approved by both parties, and everybody's going to sign one document instead of Cave City. And my understanding is it's supposed to be approved and ready to sign, I think, he said, the 19th.
I think, though, the question comes in, if it is to be approved by the 19th, it's not approved yet, and I think that's the concern, is that we don't have a finished, signed document, because you know as well as I do, things can change. People cannot follow through with things they say they're going to do.
Well, why don't we vote on? Call for the question. Call for the question. And the second. Why don't we have a roll call vote on the motion and the second motion about postponing? In that proper?
You have a vote now on whether to postpone indefinitely because that's the only motion you can vote on until that's disposed of.
We have a roll call vote on that.
Okay. Benel.
Yes.
Gons.
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt.
No.
Kirkpatrick.
No.
Lowery.
Yes.
Neil.
No.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Witcher is absent.
So the motion has passed to postpone.
That's correct.
Okay.
No further.
It'll come up in two weeks.
No further discussion. It can come up in two weeks if someone brings it up.
And I think that the way it was stated, that we'd like to go to the finance committee so they can review without, without us doing anything at this body. Okay, next item is resolution number 2021, a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a grant administered by the Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program.
City of Glasgow Resolution Number 2021-blank, a resolution of the City of Glasgow to make application for a grant administered by the Transportation Alternatives Program. Be hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that April Russell, grant writer for the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of $732,700 of federal funds administered through the Transportation Alternatives Program for the Glasgow Alternative Transportation Endeavor, GATEE Plan, which will be used, if received, for the purpose of building sidewalks through Trojan Way, Parkview Drive, and Highway 31E. The grant has an 80/20 match with the local match being $183,175. The total project amount is $915,875. Be it further resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for said grant. So adopted this 11th day of October, 2021, Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk.
Having heard the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, Norris.
Have a motion by Councilman Norris on the second.
Second.
Second, back to council, Councilman Honeycutt.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yeah.
The, is this one of these that votes, you vote tonight and then vote two weeks later?
No.
This one's, okay.
Just tonight.
Well, I just want the council to know I'm going to vote no. I'm all for the pathways, but the reason I'm going to vote no is because we're broke, we're taxing people, but hey, we miraculously find $183,000. We find $35,000 to give raises, but anytime you go and say, hey, we got any money? No, we're broke and we've raised taxes. So I'm not against this, but I would love for the finance people to come and say, here's how much money we really have, not pull a rabbit out of a hat every 30 days or 60 days. So I just wanted you to know why I'm going to vote no for that.
April, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. And I. I understand, so this grant, so right now we're starting a construction on type grant phase two. We applied for that in 2015, and we're just now getting to where we're ready to do it. So if this grant is applied for now, we won't be awarded until next year. It could be three or four more years before it even comes into play. When it comes time to do it, if the city doesn't have the money, we can just say no, thank you, and move on. But it's crazy, you know, when it's 80/20 and you're going to get to meet up with the state, because that's part of why the state will put the sidewalks down 1297. The reason they do that is because the city is actively putting sidewalks in and passing to meet that with their gate plan.
Make sure, you know, I, I agree with this, and I believe in investing in our community. What I don't agree with is anytime we need money, we can find it, but then anytime we don't want to find money, we don't find it. So that's my issue. All right, now, April, I got a, if, this is, like you said, I believe we've done the construction from Going Park down to College Street.
Yeah, well, and Downsburg.
All right, and then, so the second part, this is, this plan was approved, I believe, under Mayor Rocker way back some timeframe.
Yes, I believe you're right.
Yes, so it was a three-part plan that we signed up for.
The gateway plan.
From the beginning and stuff, after we went through the whole process. So this is part three, I think it's, I wish it would have been in.
This, this is just phase three of the gate plan.
Yes, that's right.
The gate plan has many phases to it. It, it, in the end, if we get to do everything we want to do, it will go all the way around the city.
Yes.
So instead of taking big chunks and doing a $5 million project, we try to take small chunks at a time that we can afford to do and, and do that way. So this one, the next phase, the phase we're getting ready to start construction on, we just bid it out and got that back, goes down 249, starts at Bunch, it goes all the way down 249 to Trojan Trail, crosses 249, and then goes all the way down Trojan Trail.
All right.
This phase three, which would be the obvious next section we would do, would connect Trojan Trail to South Green Street. There's no sidewalks on 31 there.
Right.
And then it would go across to Trojan Way, and it would go up beside the school, I think it's Barlow Cemetery Road.
Red Cross.
And then it would go Parkview Drive all the way to 1297. Now, the state is widening 1297, they've already done the right-of-way for it. Part of the reason they put the multi-use path in there is because the city does our part.
Right.
So we have to do our part for them to do their part.
All right, now, in the past, on some of these grants, we've done work for our 20%. Is that still a possibility?
Uh, it's not really with the federal grants. We try to stay away from that because we, we just can't meet the federal requirements that they need.
All right.
But all of the utilities work with us, do their work for free for us to move their lines, things to that nature. The water company, electric, plant board, all of them have been great to work with.
April, in the phase two that you just talked about, that's going through Trojan Trail.
Yes.
What is our contribution in dollar amounts on that project?
Uh, I'm trying to, I'd have to look back, I don't know if it's on my hand right now. Um, what do we got?
I say 200 pounds.
Yeah, the total.
Part of the reason they put the multi-use path in there is because the city does our part. So, we have to do our part for them to do their part.
All right. Now, in the past, on some of these grants, we've done work for our 20%. Is that still a possibility?
It's not really with the federal grants. We try to stay away from that, because we just can't meet the federal requirements that they need.
All right.
But all of the utilities work with us, do their work for free for us to move their lines, things to that nature. The water company, electric, plant board, all of them have been great to work with.
April, in the phase two that you just talked about, that's going through Trojan Trail...
Yes.
What is our contribution in dollar amounts on that project?
I'm trying to, I'd have to look back. I don't know if it's on my hand right now.
Estimate?
What do we have?
I say 200,000.
Yeah, the total project's almost like 1.3 or 1.4, so 80% of that.
Okay, that's my question.
But it has been carried over in our budget for several years.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Thank you.
Because we knew it was coming. And I'll say, and I know sidewalks, and I have no idea why, but they've been controversial for some reason or another. We put those sidewalks in on Carnation Drive and Bowen Avenue and the big nice bridge in. I have had phone calls from realtors, from people in Bowling Green, please keep us up to date on what you're doing. That is a huge deal when we try to sell houses, the quality of life. I have even seen on Zillow and things like that, houses for sale. They'll take pictures of that to try to, you know, marketing of their home. So, you know, it's a good thing.
Any other questions? I have, we just have a word with this resolution. All those in favor of this resolution, say a "yes."
Aye.
Those like sign?
No.
Resolution passes. Next, our resolution is the City of Glasgow to make application for the League of Cities' Insurance Services Compensation Safety Grant.
City of Glasgow Resolution Number 2021- Blank, a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a Kentucky League of Cities' Insurance Services Compensation Safety Grant. Be hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that April Russell, grant writer for the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of $3,000 administered through the Kentucky League of Cities' Insurance Services Compensation Safety Grant, which will be used, if received, for the purpose of personnel policy updates for the Administration Department of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky. This grant has a match obligation of $3,000. Be it further resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for said grant. So adopted this 11th day of October, 2021, Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Mona Simmons, City Clerk.
Have you heard this resolution? Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Neal, second.
Second by Neal.
Second by Councilman Banal. All those in favor, say a "yes."
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Passes. We have pending notifications for Resolution Number 20162341 in the packet. And the next item is, we could get a motion to go into closed session, and a second, then the county attorney will read the reason and the KY for each item that we're going to talk about.
No, Norris, second.
Second by Neal, motion by Norris.
Pursuant to KRS 61.8101B, deliberation on the future acquisition or sale of real property by public agency, but only when publicity would be likely to affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by public agency, and KRS 61.8101C, discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency. And that's the two items.
First and second, all those, all those, say a "yes."
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. If we're going into closed session. We're going into closed session.
I'll entertain a motion to come back in to open session.
Motion by Neal.
I have a motion by Councilman Norris, second.
All those approve, signify the same eye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are back in closed session.
Closed session.
I mean, open session, out of closed session. And, uh, there was no action taken in our, in our closed session. So the only thing that's left on the agenda is our announcements. Uh, first of all, uh, there'd be a hot Halloween drive-through, Trick or Treat Saturday, October the 3rd, 2021, beginning at 2:00 until 5:00 p.m. in Golden Park. That's 201, Golden Park, uh, Glasgow, presented by the City of Glasgow, Glasgow Parks and Parks, Glasgow Police, Glasgow Fire, Glasgow Public and Public Department. If your organization is interested in participating, we'd like to get you to it. It's your call. Uh, you can contact April at, uh, 886513811, or April 6525977. And whatever anticipation you'd be, you can set up a table. And as a drive-by, you can have people handing out the bad candy. Or if you want to participate, you're welcome to donate money for us to buy candy with, and we'll hand it out. But either way, call one of them, either one of them, and make their arrangements. We would like to have everybody who wants to participate to be able to. So, uh, those numbers, and they'll be available. If you lose them or forget the number, you can call City Hall and we'll give you those numbers. Our next meeting is October 25th, 2021, 7:00 p.m. in person here at the City Council Chambers. And the Glasgow Trick or Treat will be celebrated on Sunday, October 31st, 2021, beginning at 4:30, not 5:00, 4:30, and it runs until 7:00. And please follow all the safety and CDC guidelines so everyone can have a safe and healthy Halloween. Is there any other announcements? Here now, I'll step the motion to adjourn.
Lowery motion.
Have a motion by Lowery and second by, uh, the candidate. I guess we need to vote on that. Your, your.